We'll now start the 6:00 PM meeting of the subcommittee meeting on discuss the appropriation of $75,000 for appraisal and consulting services for the possible eminent domain of parcels in Park and Suffolk and Congress and Chamin. I ask my colleagues to please put their phones on vibrate if you do have a phone. The clerk will now take a roll. We did invite City Manager Tom Ambrosino, the Honorable Members of the City Council, the neighborhood developers, parcel owners of the area, and members of the public.
Counselor, we don't have to.
Here.
Counselor Recupero.
Yeah.
Counselor Garcia.
Present.
Counselor Vega Malvarado.
Yeah.
Counselor Robinson.
Yeah.
Counselor Rodriguez.
Yeah.
Counselor Taylor.
Here.
Counselor Lopez.
Here.
Counselor Brown.
Here.
Counselor Zapp.
Present.
We're going to start the conversation on the appropriation of the $75,000. I asked and we had the property owners identified and sent letters so that they can, we'll go over the different parcels that were discussed. I have the city manager here. I do ask the members of the public, if you've not been here before, that we do ask you to adhere to decorum. We will have each an opportunity to speak. I will, I will point to you or mention by raising hands if you'd like to speak and then I will provide you the opportunity. Please do not speak over anyone else so that we can have and hear everybody as each individual is talking. So, yes, Counselor Garcia.
Thank you, Counselor. I just want to be fully transparent, Mr. Chairman, that I will have to recuse myself if there is any conversation about property 15 Chaminet Street, 19 Chaminet Street, and 23 Chaminet Street. Full disclosure, I am an employee at the Neighborhood Developers and this will present a conflict of interest, so I will have to recuse myself if a conversation regarding those three properties do arises. Thank you.
Understood. So, just so that people are aware, this order was sent to the city manager and then to ask about the doing an appraisal. He presented an order and that order was for $75,000 if we would hire a consultant to discuss these parcels. So, at this time, I'll ask the city manager if we want to go over the suggested parcels and then, and then at, and then further talk to the individual owners of those parcels. So...
So, thank you, Mr. President. So, the council had passed an order requesting that I give you a plan for how you would go about, if you wanted to, to take these parcels by eminent domain for affordable housing. So, affordable housing is a legitimate purpose for taking property by eminent domain, but as I stated to you in my letter, my May 11th letter, which hopefully you have a copy of, basically, the first step is you have to appraise the parcels because if you're taking parcels by eminent domain, you have to offer the owners of the parcel the appraised value of the property. And that's called the pro tanto offer. They don't have to settle for that offer. They can contest the value and then you end up fighting in court over that value, but the taking still goes forward provided that the council, so there's a, there's a bunch of steps. The first step is you have to have an appraisal. Once the appraisal is returned, then if you still want to move forward, you have to make an appropriation to pay the price. You have to have an order of taking and a public hearing on that order of taking and then you vote to acquire the property. That appropriation vote to actually acquire the property is the vote that requires a super majority of the council. It requires eight of 11 votes to move forward to take someone's property for eminent domain purposes. So, as I said, the first step is if you wanted to proceed, we have to get an appraiser to go out and appraise these properties. But in addition to that, I also recommended that if you're really serious about this, you need to hire a consultant to take a look at these parcels and see what conceivably could you build on these parcels if you really wanted to acquire them for affordable housing. Most of these are very small parcels in and of themselves. Most of them are not buildable. You'd have to combine them to make them buildable lots. And so, we'd want a consultant, if this is, if you're serious about this, in addition to appraising the property, you probably want a consultant to tell you what you could conceive, what value they would have for you for affordable housing purposes. And so, the $75,000 figure that I provided for you is both what we estimate would be the cost of the appraiser and the cost of the consultant. And then, if you, if you decided to appropriate that money, we would then have someone appraise, have a consultant go out and do some building massing analysis and say, here's what the cost would be and here's what you might end up being able to build for affordable housing on these parcels. And that's where we came up with the price of $75,000, which we don't have. You'd have to appropriate that money. But again, you know, I wouldn't do that unless you're serious about moving forward because the final appropriation vote will require aid of, aid councils in support.
So, Mr. City Manager, the, the zone that we're looking at is an R2. I just put the overlay, if you can see on the map there. So, that is an R2 district. What is the, we, I know that the city council did not pass the most latest proposals for any changes in density. So, currently, for example, if we look at some of these lots, most of them, I believe, are...
Most of them are unbuildable. The minimum lot size in R2 for a single family is 5,000 square feet. To build a two, you need 7,000 square feet. Need 3,500 a unit to build a two-family home in the R2 district. So, you need 7,000 square feet to build a two-family, but you can build a one-family home under the current zoning if you have 5,000 square feet.
So, at least...
Most of these parcels are under 5,000.
So, at least if these parcels, as they currently are just divided, the most you can get out of them is a single family?
Most...
No. John's nodding no, so...
Yeah, I think in most of them, you'd have to combine them to get to 5,000 square feet.
So, there are lots that are smaller than 5,000 square feet?
Most of these lots are under 5,000.
So, basically, the current owner, if they wanted to build something, they could not, correct?
Correct. These...
Mr. City Manager, is it correct that the, the current owners...
So, if they're grandfathered in as buildable lots, but they're not grandfathered in the existing lot size?
If they were created prior to the adoption zone, is it correct to build something that's built? They have to be...
Yeah, I don't think they're buildable.
Okay. And if they, so we're looking at, okay, so there's, so there's one, one of the, one of the obstacles is that the lots are small and could possibly not be able, and the other, the idea is if they were to be taken, then you could assemble a few of them together and basically have some sort of multifamily building there, correct?
I'm sorry, can you repeat that question?
So, currently, the individual lots themselves would be limited in what could be built at maximum maybe a one-family. The only way you can do anything of a multifamily and maybe economically and if, and if, and where it would be feasible for the city to do it would have to be under, as a multifamily, you'd have to put the lots together.
You'd have to combine these lots, correct? Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, you can't build on, most of these lots, as I said, are under 5,000 square feet and they're not buildable.
And as far as using the eminent domain, that's a procedure that we've done in the past. For example, to assemble lots, we took the commercial properties and residential, no, well, not so much residential lots, but there was a mix of residential lots and commercial lots in the urban, in the urban zone, correct? Where One North is right now?
Yeah, I wasn't, the only eminent domain proceeding that I've been involved with since I've been here is the taking of the Salvation Army building. So, I don't know, John would know the history of previous eminent domain takings. The only one that I've pursued was the taking of the Salvation Army building, so...
Okay. John, you wanted to answer that?
Actually, in the Urban Renewal District, there were no eminent domain takings. They were actually acquired through a purchase and negotiation with the property owners.
With, there was a possibility of...
The council did approve eminent domain takings, however, in order to avoid the long drawn out process that the city manager had talked to about a possibility of any, any owner challenging the cost, they, the city decided to negotiate with them as you would any other buyer.
So, I recall being on the city council. So, we voted to give the power of eminent domain to then, I guess, the Economic Development Board, but they in fact didn't use it. They just used fundings and used the possibility to negotiate just a deal, knowing that it's either sell or we're going to take it and then go to court that way, basically.
Yes.
Okay. Counselor Brown?
John, now, the eminent domain conversation is going on now, was that all commercial or commercial and residential because?
I'm sorry, I can't hear.
They're all residential.
Was it all commercial or resident?
In the...
Residential. When we took what we were threatening to take for...
When, when we, when the property was acquired up in the Everett Avenue, it was both commercial and residential.
Commercial, so there was no residential.
It was residential in the...
He said both.
No, it wasn't both.
In the...
It was both. They're not listening.
Hold on, hold on. If you're quiet, I can hear. I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, there's noise over here that I'm having difficult to hear. Okay.
Okay, but Mr. Chair, if you can ask me, I'm sorry, John, can you just...
So, in the area of the One North, where the One North buildings, there were some residential units.
There were residential...
Some residential properties, yes.
Do you remember what addresses those were?
I don't remember.
Okay.
Counselor, is there any questions? Counselor Robinson?
For our urban renewal project, actually was Arlington Street, Summer Street, Everett Avenue, which didn't actually amount to anything and that's why some of the things took a long time to be bought and built. So, it was just an exercise that was done by the city.
Okay. Counselor, do you have a question for either the city manager or Tom, or John?
I got a question for John.
What's the question, sir? Through the chair.
For many years, Mr. Lewis, which is sitting right there, has been wanting to build a house in the back of his property and they always denied him to build houses. Could, let's say they want to build houses where they are now, right? How they go about doing it? Could they get a variance since they don't meet the lot size? For years, they've been telling me they want to build and the city's telling them they cannot build. So, now, let's say they want to build. How would they go about building if they want to, when they cannot? So, that's the, I want to know, if they wanted to build, let's say they decide and they say, "I want to build a single-family home on my lot" and they, they don't have the minimum size like Tom says, right? What would they do?
You can always apply for a variance. You can apply for a variance, doesn't mean that you'll always receive the variance. There are four conditions of the variance and you have to meet all four of them and the board, zoning board will make that determination whether they meet all four of variances. If they don't meet any of those conditions, they generally will not grant the variance. You can ask for it, there's no guarantee, you're not guaranteed a variance.
No, they're not.
Do you have any other questions?
No, I just wanted to know because for years, they've been, you know, they've been telling me they wanted to build and they were always denied. So, it's not of their doing that they do not want to build. They don't want to do their lots, whatever they want to do to it, right? So, that's what I'm saying. If they decide they wanted to build, I seen lots their size being built. I was wondering if they decide, if there was any way, what a variance that they could build?
Subject to grantings of variances and special permits.
Thank you. No more questions.
Counselor Taylor?
Question for the city manager. You said that in your opinion, the, or taking by eminent domain of property belonging to the property owners, the taking it for the purpose of affordable housing was a legitimate...
It's a legitimate public purpose for purposes of exercising the eminent domain...
So, is, so is it your stance that it is only affordable housing that is legitimate here for, for, for taking away somebody's property?
No, there's lots of reasons you could take, there are lots of public purpose reasons you can take, you can exercise the power of eminent domain.
Can you, can you, can you just go over some of them?
You want to build a municipal facility, like a school or a city hall. You want to build a public parkland, you can take for public purpose. You know, those are the typical examples.
I mean, it seems to me that there has to be some sort of kind of overwhelming, you know, necessity for the city, like, like, like what you had talked about before, the old urban renewal plan or something, in order to take somebody's property. I mean, is that, is that, is that a legitimate...
I would say my personal philosophy is it, you really should have a compelling, strong purpose, especially when you're taking public property against the, in the wishes of the owner of that property.
Right.
So, in my career in government, I have been very reluctant to take public property when owners have been unwilling.
And how, and how...
So, I can, the example, the example that I can talk about here is when we were building, building the Clock Avenue School, it would have behooved the city to have taken the property right next door, which is 29 Tudor. And we, I talked to the council about taking 29 Tudor and the council was prepared to do it, but the owner was very reluctant and we gave her time to see if she could find another place. And at the end of the day, she said, "I do not wish to move." And the city backed away even though it would have made our plans for that school a little easier to execute and would have not had such a tight situation between the school and that property. So, I just use as an example to say, in the face of opposition, I think government ought to really only move forward when the need is extraordinarily compelling.
Thank you.
John, the, the example you pointed was an actual home, right?
Correct.
It wasn't a vacant lot that you talked about?
It was not vacant, wait.
Okay, so it was actually someone was living in a house and the, and the, and the properties that identified here tonight are in the order, they're all vacant lots, correct?
I, I believe so. I believe they are vacant.
There's not one, there's not, there's not all...
None of them have, none of them have existing homes.
None of them have an existing home on top of them. Okay, just wanted, because you pointed to a particular example and I just wanted to make sure that we understood that was...
Yes, yeah.
Miss Swope, I believe, that lived there and...
Now, I will say that in fairness, when I was in Revere, I did take properties for a school even against the wishes of homeowners, but in that case, I felt the city had a absolutely compelling public purpose to act.
Okay.
So, that's the threshold I would use for taking such properties.
Thank you. I'm going to remind the audience, everyone will have an opportunity to talk. If you insist on speaking out over the others who are speaking, then that, then you will be asked to leave because we're trying to have an opportunity for everyone to speak and if you want to try to yell and talk over them, then you will be asked to leave. Okay? Okay. So, you'll have an opportunity to talk.
No, I'm one of the more here.
Okay, so, just, thank you. The first person who I'd like to call up is the owners of 46 Suffolk Street. On record, it's identified up here in the yellow bracket and it's the, listed here is Henry Lewis. So, if I will show on the map here, we've identified the area, but let me just make Is this the, I'm sorry, do, please state your name?
My name is Kenneth Lewis.
What was that?
Kenneth Lewis.
Kenneth Lewis.
Yes, sir.
This area that's behind the minivan here, is that the parcel that we're talking about?
Yes, sir, correct.
Okay, that is correct. And that is the parcel that we're, that you, that your family owns?
Yes, sir, correct.
That's why we're not going to write out, she also street, street down. No, ours is right here.
No, they got the right, I have the right property, sir. I have the right property, don't worry. Please explain the history of the parcel that you have, current use and previous intentions. It was noted tonight that you may have tried to build on this, but right now we see, I think, I don't know if that's, is that van still there, that one in the back?
Yes, that's...
Okay. So, can you explain the current use and if there's been any attempt to, what, what, what do the intentions are?
Absolutely. First, I'd like to thank everybody for being here tonight. I appreciate your time and I appreciate you giving me the chance to speak. My family has owned 95 Essex Street my entire life and the land in the back, there used to be a garage in the back, a two-car garage, and my family tore it down because they were trying to build a one-family house down there. The reason they were trying to build that house is to move down the back and to renovate, fix, and rent out the three-family 95 Essex Street. However, they were not able to build because, like they said, they tried to get a variance, they were denied, and they have pursued it. They went to an architect, they got blueprints drawn up and so forth and so on. Right now, the land is used primarily for growing vegetables. I put a tarp down there, I put cardboard and hay down to get the ground ready. That big tree is a mulberry tree in which we harvest mulberries from. I make mulberry jam, mulberry wine, mulberry, like, you know, scones, they're actually pretty good. We also do use the yard for parking and the occasion that, there is no parking when we come home, when I come home from work or when my mother, when she used to work, she's retired now and disabled, you know, so sometimes we had to park in front of the other, that's why all the signs, because, and the painted things, because, you know, the, the area is very congested as it is. A lot of times, there is no parking, not even, there's people parking in front of the yard, I have to have them removed because there's no parking. You know, it's not something I like to do, but at the end of the day, if I come home at 12 o'clock at night and I can't find parking until 2:00 in the morning and I got to be back at work at 7:00, a couple hours of sleep is, you know, I mean, a couple hours of sleep, you know, but moving forward, I don't feel that the city should take land from anybody that's worked hard their entire lives. My, my father used to deliver bread, Wonder Bread. My mother, she used to work three hour, three shifts, sometimes back to back, 90-hour work weeks, right, just to try to give us more than what they had growing up. You know, my mother is very upset about this. My father is very upset too. However, he's not here today because he's sick. You know, I don't, I don't think this is the right thing to do. You know, I mean, every one of you live in the city. I'm sure you all love the city and I'm sure everybody wants what's best for the city. This is not what's best for the city. This, when I got the letter in the mail, broke my heart, for the first time, broke my heart, that the city would try to take or threaten to take, like the counselor said, threaten to take land that my family's owned for my entire life, land that my, my family has tried to build on and was denied repeatedly, you know? If we can't build on it, how is it, how is it even feasible to propose more housing built on it? It, it doesn't make sense to me. Yes, the land is vacant, but that's because we weren't allowed to build on it. Otherwise, there'd be a one-family house down there and we'd be paying taxes on that one-family house. We had an architect draw up a plan with two-car parking on our land. Granted, the house would be pushed all the way back to our property line, but we did follow those, those guidelines, you know? And our neighbor here, Jobinia, she owns a lot next to us. We tried to, we, we talked about combining our lots, which is something that we're still talking about, and the land next to it, we, we also tried to acquire, I believe Maria tried to acquire. I know I personally went down and spoke to Jimmy and tried to acquire it last year, a year and a half ago, you know, to try to increase our landmass, you know, so that we could build, you know, and not fight for the variance, you know? I, I...
Do you remember when it was that you filed with the city and got denied? When was that?
Well, it was a year ago.
It was, it was about eight years ago.
Eight years ago?
Yeah, it was about eight years ago.
I'm just saying, there should be a record of it, so it's a file, so I'm just curious to...
Yeah, yeah, there is.
...to take a look and see when the ZBA took your case and denied it. I'm just, I'd like to hear that.
Ah, yes, we can, we can go back and look at that. Do you know what office I would go to or if we can even...
I can, I can, I can do it. Just wanted to make sure that there was a, I'm just, I don't, I wasn't on the council eight years ago, so I'm just trying to understand...
No, yeah, no, I completely understand.
When the, when the zoning, when, when your zoning board hearing was, when the planning board hearing was, the recommendation and so forth and the denial and, and that, so I'm just curious to know.
Now, is there already a proposal for like a rough draft of what would go there? You said affordable...
There's nothing.
You said affordable housing. Do you know how many units?
There's nothing planned yet.
There's nothing there yet?
That, the, that's the, there's nothing being...
Well, that's a good sign.
There's nothing. Just an idea of, of, the idea of if potentially the city funds it, appraisal and then makes an offer to all of you. So, that's the idea.
Yeah, well, one, the price of 75,000 is really low. I offered Jimmy, I think, 74 or something and he basically laughed at me. Respect.
Jimmy, Jimmy who?
D'Amico.
Oh, okay.
You know, you know, even though he can't build on the land, he doesn't like to give up on anything and I, I understand that, you know, land is land, especially in a city like this. Imagine a parcel like that in Boston or Brookline, you know? I mean, I'm sorry, give me one second.
He told me the 2300 street, 4000 block, it's 2300, that's why I own it, it's 46, 48 Suffolk Street. That's why he's...
So, my mother says that there was a two-family building there prior to them owning the land. So, she believes that it's grandfathered in, which is...
Grandfathered in is only two years at max. You lose grandfathered in after two years.
Okay.
Ma'am, I, I'm, I'm, I'm just letting you know that it's, it's two years.
Do you want to speak, she can speak after. Was that...
No, no, I understand, but it's, no, no, it's just, it's back and forth, so...
So, another thing that I wanted to bring up is on, further up on Suffolk Street, there is a brand-new condo that was built, on a land, on two condos, on land that, that's a lot smaller than our lot and it's brand-new construction. It was built from the foundation up. They tore down the old building and they built a new building and seeing something like that go up and having been told we cannot build on our land is a slap in the face.
Again, I want to keep what's relevant. I, it doesn't sound like something eight, 10 years ago...
No, no, this is, this is right now.
No, what I'm saying about your denial, before I compare to what was offered, I can't compare, I'd like to see what happened. If you're telling me about something that was offered 10 years ago, it was a different atmosphere, the goals of the administration, you had a different city manager and such. So, what got passed now is different than what could have been passed years ago or denied. So, I would venture, I would encourage you to maybe reconsider refiling and getting something done, if, if that's the goal, again. But again, we just wanted to hear, the idea was tonight to hear first from the property owners to give the city council an idea of the owners presently...
Now, can I ask a question? What is the, what is the tax benefit for affordable housing versus owner? What is the, what is the tax benefit for affordable housing versus owner-occupied house? So say if my family built a one-family down there and say that Maria and her son built a one-family down there, what would be, if we paid our taxes on that land, okay, which we, which we do, but if we pay the taxes on the land with the house there, okay? Would that not be more of an incentive to the city than having affordable housing there? Plus, we're owners. We don't want to leave this city. I myself, I love this city, I grew up in it my entire life.
I can't, I can't talk about what would go there, but the intent was or the idea was that it would be home-owned, owner-owned, affordable, not rental, but affordable, and still affordable still means that they do have property taxes.
Yes.
And so...
But what are those property taxes as compared to ours?
Probably a difference of a hundred dollars a year or two hundred dollars a year in difference. That's the difference in tax revenue.
But, all right, now, what benefit would that be to the community? To have all those additional units, affordable housing units?
To have ability to provide Chelsea residents an ownership opportunity to own a home and live in Chelsea and not be pushed out, there is a benefit to that.
Well, I mean, you're trying to push us out of our land...
But we're talking about people who are leaving the city and moving out, we're not taking your three-family, you're not leaving your house.
No, but that's, that's, that's also our land, though, you're...
Again, there, this is the, this is, there are some tough decisions being made and talking about, we're not taking homes or even thinking about taking homes, we're taking, there's a difference. You cannot, you can see what the difference is, I mean, we can have it to tell the...
I'm sorry, Roy.
There's emotions, though.
I, I do understand, but I disagree. I believe the home and the land, it's the same exact thing. Land is land, whether it's a house or a land.
Okay.
You know, I mean, people... So if we do apply for the variance on the land to build...
I'm sorry, what was that, Ken?
If we did apply for the variance on the land now, like you said, you weren't on the council eight years ago and you are now, if we applied for the variance now, what odds would we have of the variance being approved with now some of our council members proposing this here move? I mean, would it be, wouldn't it be a conflict of interest for the, for, you know, because here we are, we want to build on it now?
Right.
And here...
I would encourage you to, I would encourage you to file something.
Okay, all right.
I would encourage you to file something.
Okay, thank you for your time, Roy.
I can't, I, I, I don't, I don't know what you filed eight years ago or plus years ago, I can't remember the plans, but I would encourage you to say, yeah, if you want to build a home for your daughter, I mean, that's encouraged. I would say, yes, go ahead and file something. You have land and you can have, and you have precedent of pointing to what was going on up the street and say, look, I can build a single fam or two fam on this lot and still provide enough space.
Yeah.
I would encourage you to go back to those architects and say, let's file. Again, I would say you would file with the zoning board.
I came here...
Okay. Counselor Garcia.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I will make a comment, I will make a statement, and I will also ask a question, if that's okay. So I want to make it very clear, something that has not been established. It was said here that there is an idea and that's why we're meeting here. I want to make it clear that some of the counselors present here are not in support of this, so I do want to make that clear. The other question that, the question I do want to ask now that I've established that, and I guess the comment that I want to make before I make that question, is I personally echo the sentiments of the city manager. I do not believe it is the government's, it's not correct for the government to exert power in terms of taking over property, especially of constituents, so I am not in favor of this. I am actually not even aware how we have these parcels and how these parcels were selected or who selected these parcels. So if we can have some clarification of how these parcels were selected, that would be great, and the other question is, under what premises and what criteria were these parcels selected? Is it simply because they're vacant lots? And who can answer that question?
They were vacant lots.
So the purpose is vacant lots? Okay. So, so we're saying that because the lots are vacant, we want to do affordable housing?
Because they were vacant, it was a consideration of development in that area, correct?
Okay. And who was this presented by? Was it our city? Who was, so who selected these parcels?
I did.
You did? Okay. So, and the premise is because they're vacant?
The, there were a number of parcels in that area that had been actually bought over, some are owned by corporations, others are being thought of opened as a park, so we thought of taking a look at all of the parcels in that area. So there was a recent purchase by Eastern Minerals, who took a lot of those parcels also, they have not come up yet, and we explored the idea of creating affordable housing on those lots, but we decided to take a look at everything down there versus just one lot.
So when you say "we," who is "we"?
I was working with the, well, I was suggesting, I was looking with the city manager and John De Priest.
Okay. So now, if, John De Priest, if you can come forward, please? So just to clarify, I think, I think the chairman has given enough, some background as to why these properties, as to what were some of the criteria behind these properties. I'd like to hear, now that I hear that this is a "we" effort, what productivity do you see behind of taking, do you really anticipate these parcels to be useful for affordable housing?
If combined to build, to heck, buildable lots, they could be developed for affordable housing, yes.
And are you in support of that?
I'm neither in support, no, I'm not, not in support, I'm neutral on the idea.
I'm just trying to understand where the reason, so just back to basics, Tom.
This came to me from the council. This was an order passed by the city council directing me to look at these parcels and give you a plan for taking them. You directed me. I then came back to you and said, the plan, there's only one plan for any kind of eminent domain taking, and the plan requires you to start with an appraisal. So if you really want to do this, you have to appropriate money to do an appraisal. That's how we're at this point.
Hmm, okay.
In my opinion, if you want my opinion...
Yes.
In the face of opposition from owners, I would say it might behoove us to look at parcels where there is not such opposition, that there, the idea of taking vacant land and creating affordable housing on it is a laudable public purpose, but I think we might find those spots in the city in locations that don't generate such neighborhood opposition because there are tax title parcels that exist out there, and we've started down that process with Orange Street. There are some other vacant parcels that could be, could provide an opportunity, and maybe some of these Eastern Minerals-owned parcels have an opportunity. I don't know, because we haven't engaged that, that particular owner yet, but, you know, I don't know that this is worth the angst because there may be other opportunities in the city to build affordable housing on vacant parcels that don't require this kind of government intrusion against the wishes of owners.
Understood. Thank you. That's it for me.
Thank you.
Counsel Lopez. Yes, my question would be, how can we, we want to take these parcels away from the owners when they haven't been allowed to build? And, and if we, they haven't been allowed to build, how are we going to take this and build?
Okay. I wanted to move on to the, well, hold on, I think we did talk to the, Mr. Lewis, so I wanted to see if fifty, fifty's here?
But I just, I have one more question.
Yes.
My question is directed towards you.
Was that a question? I didn't, I thought that was a statement. I'm sorry. What's the question again? Why they shut this off? Okay, so if we haven't allowed the owners to build, how come we want to take that and build now? And then we'd be able to...
So we would have, if, if this council moved forward and took these parcels, the city would combine the different parcels and create buildable lots, so these lots aren't buildable as they currently exist. These, these owners, if they wish to build, in the absence of a variance, the getting a variance, you can seek a variance, whether you get it, that's up to the zoning board of appeals, but in the absence of a variance, it is my opinion that none of these lots are buildable. They would have to be combined, so the direct answer to your question is, if the city acquired them, we would have to create new combined lots that at least exceed five thousand square feet in order to build.
Okay. Counsel Taylor.
Sorry, Mr. City Manager, I'd like to follow up. So, so then, to try to answer Counsel Lopez's question, what would prevent these owners from getting together, establishing an LLC, combining the properties and then doing something with it to, to...
They could.
With the city where they would need a variance now because they've combined their own...
That is absolutely within their right. They could, they could, they could join together in some of these adjoining lots, merge all the lots...
And build, and build market rate.
Build market rate housing, they could, but in this zone, what you need is five thousand square feet to build a one-family, seven thousand square feet to build a two-family, and ten thousand five hundred square feet...
I understand.
To build three or above.
But I guess my, but I guess my question is, I mean, that Counsel Lopez had, had, had a good question, is that if, from my perspective, you only use eminent domain in, in, in extreme circumstances, and, and so, and so, you know, that's why I was asking you earlier if this is truly a compelling reason to do this, and because that's how I would make my decision on whether to support such a, such an action, but, and, and there is a housing shortage, there's no question about that, so, you know, but I guess, I guess what I'm saying is, is that, you know, if, if we're proposing or investigating the possibility of taking these properties, when they've been, they've been told that they can't do it individually, they could combine their own by, you know, getting a lawyer and forming an LLC and everybody put their thing into the pot and, and going to, going to see a developer themselves.
They could do that, yes. They would have to combine some of these lots and they would be able to build as a matter of right.
By right, instead of having to go before the zoning board of appeals.
Correct.
So, so, you know, I just, I just think it's a, it kind of, it just looks bad, I think, to when, to, to, if we're going to say to somebody that we're, you can't build, but now we're gonna, we're gonna take it from you and build ourselves, so I mean, that just, and I understand that there is an interest in the city to provide more housing, there is a dearth of housing, especially because despite the census numbers, more people are coming into the city despite the census numbers.
There absolutely is, but I just want to clarify for you, this is not a recommendation from my administration to you. I'm not recommending this. I am responding to a specific council order that said to me, give you a plan.
Well, so, so I guess we find ourselves here, and so I'm asking you then, you know, if that was a, you know, I mean...
If you're asking me if I'm recommending this, I would say I am not.
Thank you.
Roy. I mean, I want, do want to give it, we've had forty-five minutes of meeting, I do want to...
I just have one quick question for you, and then I will let Maria and...
Yeah, I'd like to hear from Maria.
I'm sure you would, you're gonna hear from Mindo. The thing is, is you proposed this bill, right?
I'm sorry?
You proposed this? You support this? You proposed this, you support this?
I proposed starting this conversation. The city is in the middle of looking at a number of different properties across the city.
But you specifically proposed these, these lots.
Let me just, let me, you, you wanted an answer, I'm looking at. In, in, there were a number of different properties the city was looking at and still is to look at possible sites. I brought up these possible sites as a whole, primarily because one particular entity, Eastern Minerals, purchased a large number of those parcels down the street, and rather than just pick one site, I picked a number of them together, sites that hadn't been built on. Now, engage the conversation. I'm still waiting to hear from the other owners of the land. One of the parcels that we were going to look at was already on the books as, not on the books, but was already suggested was going to be donated to the city, so it was all part, it was a big picture look at it, not just your property and so forth, but we needed to engage, I felt it necessary to engage all homeowners to find out what was going on with the lots that had been historically not built on. That was the point, to engage everybody, to hear from everybody. I didn't, didn't do this in a vacuum, there's a reason why this meeting is being held, is to hear from everybody. The point, that was the point, to say, hey, this, I've been living in Chelsea for all my life, and as many times as I've driven down Suffolk Street, I've seen nothing but empty lots on this, and I get calls repeatedly from people, the pressure that we feel from people who are being pushed out and can't afford to live here anymore, so there is pressure to say, hey, can we find locations and lots in this city to build and have affordable homeownership opportunities rather than lose our residents? So yes, I am not ashamed to say that in thinking of possible solutions, I said, let's take a look down the street and engage and see, maybe you want to sell the lot, maybe you don't, I don't know, but if I don't knock on your door and at least ask, what am I doing here? If I don't even knock on your door without asking the question, do you want to sell, then there we go. But it may not be your lot that gets sold, but it may be the lot next door, but the conversation has to happen, I feel. I, ma'am, this is the first time I've reached and talked to anybody, I don't know who you're talking about, but I've never talked to your husband, whatever, but anyway, this is why it all started. Absolutely. I, working, looking at all different lots across the city, whether it be Orange Street, Willow Street, whatever, looked everywhere and decided, and I, and I will talk to my colleague Cooper, he was the first one that said, I'm not crazy about the idea, but we should at least talk to everybody. I said, absolutely, let's invite everybody in. Let's invite everybody in and we'll have a talk about it. That's what this is. I know it's upsetting, but if, but, but what was the risk in saying, hey, maybe it's someone who's not upset by this and say, hey, you know what, it's a lot, I'm not really... really using it, you know, whatever? So we knocked on doors. That was the cost. So fifty and I, you, is it Maria who owns the property?
It's my mother, uh-huh. We own the house though.
Okay.
I, I will speak, because I speak English very well. I'm a highly educated black man that speaks four languages. I got this.
Okay.
Okay. I came in highly upset, I got this. I came in highly upset because this is how we treat people who thug us and rob us in the corners. So I apologize for that behavior, but let me speak a little eloquently for you. My mother bought that land a long, long time ago. You're giving us $2,000 a year for the years that she's owned that land. If you think that's fair, then okay. Hold on, hold on, hold on. Let me finish and then you can have your moment, right?
Hold on, hold on, hold on. I just want to make clarification. No, no, no.
Let me finish, though.
Let me just clarify, no, no.
Let me finish.
You're, you're, I want to correct something before we go forward and it's been going on for a while tonight.
Go ahead.
For some reason, someone, someone thinks that, I keep on hearing the $75,000.
That's the, that's the person's instrument.
I want you to understand something. The $75,000 is not an offer of the property, is not an offer.
Forget all that.
The $75,000.
We don't care about the numbers.
Was, was, that's what we would pay a consultant to do a valuation.
We got you, we got you.
So it's nothing. Take that, $75,000, forget it.
Let's continue the conversation. Let's continue the conversation. Hold on, settle, 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 settle. Let's continue the conversation, right? Because your family's been here for a long, long, long time and I know your brother very well. You guys built s- the city, half the city, still own half of it. That's beautiful what you did. How come we can't do that? How come we can't do the same thing, which is build a city like your family did and built and built and now is strong, never going to fall down? That's what we're trying to build for our family, generational wealth that you've built for your family. So you can't take that from us. You can't take that general, generational wealth from us, no matter what we want to do with our land. Where's the picture of my land? Because I'd like to talk to you about my specific land. I have two specific trucks there. I own a business that the city signed off on for me to run. I need that yard to run my business. Check out my truck, my cleaning truck, check out my next truck right next to it. I also park back there, so does my elderly mother, because there's no parking on the, in the neighborhood, there's just no parking. You see my tr- trucks there? Those are my work trucks. I use those for a business registered downstairs with the city of Chelsea. So not only will you be putting me out of the house, out of my yard, you're putting my business out. So you're going to knock me out and my business, because where am I going to keep my products and my truck and where am I going to do all that? So you're taking two things out when you do that, right? That's, that's just my yard, okay? My elderly mother, where would she park? I think the law in Chelsea, I'm not sure, and if I'm wrong, please enlighten me, but I believe you have to have two parkings for each house, right? I thought, but it's like the variance when you build now. So if you take that away, we don't have no parking. So we'd be willing to work with you guys if you guys want to buy our land, but we're looking at like $10 million, because it's worth that much to us, you know? It's worth that much to our family, priceless. We can't sell that house in that punk, hundred thousand, two hundred thousand. You think we can buy a house in Chelsea? And when you talk about affordable housing, do you think the rent in Chelsea is affordable? Let's ask her that question. Do you guys think the rent in Chelsea is affordable? Because we need to have that conversation. Okay? You see what we make, you know what the median salary is here. You think the rents are, the rents in Chelsea are affordable?
I was asking you to stay particular about the history of this.
Let's talk about it.
Okay.
Forty years in my family.
Okay.
My two trucks are there because I own the business that I run, just like your family has for many years, building generational wealth. I need that yard to run my business, because I need to park my trucks and my equipment comes out of my backyard. I need to carry that to work. So you're trying to take me out of business, not you specifically, in saying this law. So you're not just stealing from my family business, you're stealing from my fan, family's general wealth, gen- wealth, our, our, you know, general wealth. So I'm like, what are you looking for?
So it doesn't, based on your needs and your parking needs.
Yeah.
Right? It doesn't sound like the idea of you putting together everything together and building something.
That's not your business.
No, no, it doesn't.
That's not your business. That's absolutely not your business, what we do with my land. What I'm telling you is you can't take me out of business or try to take my land.
But you were nodding your head earlier.
That's, that's, that's not your business. That's not your business, what I do with my land. It's my business to keep owning my land.
That's fine.
I'm telling you what I use it for now.
But, but what I'm asking you, that you, so it, you, you need it primarily just for parking?
I don't know. I might just change my mind in the future. I'm telling you what I use it for today is to run my business out of my backyard and my mother to park and my tenants who own two vehicles each. So if you come back there at night, you'll see a full. So what we're saying, today it's parking. Tomorrow, depending on how this turns out, me and them will get together and make this a long, drawn out process and try to build ourselves. We're not letting you take it, so it's not going down that easy. So we've set money aside, me and my mother, we'll put 20 grand aside specifically for this fight. Yes, you might still take the land, but we're going to make sure nobody there is in office when that project goes down.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
That's a promise.
Appreciate it, thank you. Is, uh, Alan Phillips here? Is there an Alan Phillips? Okay.
They couldn't show up, because they work at night.
Is there an Alan Phillips here?
They're poor.
No. Thank you. Okay. Uh, Julio Marin? Is there Julio Marin? Uh, sir, I gave you the opportunity to talk. I gave you the opportunity to talk. You've had your opportunity to talk. I'm now asking you to please hold it in so other people can talk. Thank you. Just be considerate. We were, I don't think anyone here was rude, so just ask, ask. Again, Julio Marin, no one? Okay. PJ Kilmartin? PJ Kilmartin, thank you. Andrew Tolo, no. That's, uh, they, they're coming out another night. Is there Andrew Tolo still the same? Andrew Tolo, Boston hides in furs, Andrew Tolos, Andrew Tolos. At this moment, I'll ask my colleague, Counselor Judith Garcia to just exit because I plan on asking, um, Rafael Maris to come up and discuss. Rafael, you here? There you are. How's it going? Good evening. Um, so Rafael, um, TND has three small lots on the corner there. It's used as a community garden. I don't expect anything to be changed there in any time near future. But you also have, I think, 51 Suffolk Street, which is just a little pocket there. Have, has there been any discussions so far yet, uh, possible use or anything, uh, you know, what's the, and how did you come up with that little pocket before, in the middle of all that?
So I don't, I don't know the history of how we ended up with that parcel. That was long before my time, but I, I can tell you that we are very interested in developing it into affordable housing. I just think that that lot is too small for us to be able to do that. So combined with what surr- surrounds it, it would theoretically be possible and we'd be very interested in doing that.
So if you surrounded it with like 110, if there was some possibility of 110.
Right.
In some way, shape or form.
Exactly.
Across the street.
And if that were impossible, then 51 could be potentially in the future, an extension of the community garden to put it to good use.
Yeah.
Right now, you know, it is, it's unclear what we can do with it.
Okay. Okay. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel, is there any questions so far? No. Thank you. I thank you, everybody, uh, for appearing tonight. There are two individuals that could not make it here tonight with their team. One was Joe McNamee from, uh, Eastern Minerals, who owns a significant area of the street parcels, um, from 64, 68 all the way to 78 on the other side. Also not available was Jimmy D'Amico. He did text me earlier tonight and said he could not make it. I told them, what I'm going to about tell you is that, um, the city council is not planning on making any moves at all at this point on this parcel without, again, talking to everybody. So, um, being that Eastern Minerals is the major, one of the major landowners there, we need to have a conversation with them, figure out what their plans are for everything. I, I know this type of conversation with you, many of you, was upsetting. I get it. I didn't expect it not to be, but again, it was an invitation to talk about what was going on in the street and what the plans were. Other than Rick Cooper, many of my colleagues here tonight were not aware of what was going on in that area. So, uh, I don't mind being the bad guy and starting the conversation, um, but again, it was just to have a conversation. I honestly feel the same way as my colleague, Rick Cooper, about taking, you know, land from individual families who have been using it. That wasn't the goal, but I thought we need to talk to these people to figure out if they have any sort of plan. And if you can't get together, again, the city manager says, we could possibly buy it, but if we don't have the conversation, we don't know, basically. You know, we make decisions up here, but we need to engage in everybody. And that was the whole point of this exercise, engage. So, um, again, there are going to be other properties that the city will be taking over by eminent domain or by tax title that won't put that up any sort of fight. We've go through this and some they will. But again, we need to engage with everybody. Wouldn't be, wouldn't be doing our jobs if we didn't talk to everybody before making any sort of decisions. But again, I appreciate, we will have another meeting, most likely have it prior to our next regularly scheduled meeting, um, and then we'll go forward from there.